Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council, please come to order with the clerk call the roll, please, to establish quorum.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Laloie.
Here.
Councilmember Talamontes.
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vang.
I am here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. I would ask everyone to please rise. I will take the privilege of reading the land acknowledgement and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the opening acknowledgement in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Patwin-Winton peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, contributions, and lives. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. So, members, before we -- let me welcome everyone, first of all, my colleagues, the city staff, most importantly, the people we all work for, the members of the public. It's good to see a crowded chamber tonight. Let me -- before we get to the special presentations, let me just say that when we get to the consent calendar, I'm going to entertain a motion to continue item seven for one week. And I think I'm going to take the privilege of just saying why. There have been a lot of input on item seven, a lot of conversation. I think it's appropriate that we take one additional week and give members of the public, including members of the Police Review Commission, anyone, the opportunity to weigh in individually with the city council and/or, of course, next week collectively, to answer some of the questions that have been raised about the particular supplier, whether there might be other suppliers, and what the whole issue is about. Let's take a week and come back, and we will take this up, all right? We'll take -- I'll take that motion when we -- but for those who are signed up to talk on this item tonight, we're not going to hear the item tonight, so you're welcome back next week or to talk on, you know, items not on the agenda after the regular agenda, all right? Okay, let us begin with the presentation, and we begin by recognizing Women's History Month. And I have been asked to present this resolution as the male mayor of the city of Sacramento. And I, you know, I take this honor with pride, and even more pride because I'm serving with a majority-women city council, with a city attorney and a city clerk and so many other leaders in our city, representing tremendous progress and real hope for the future. I mean, the resolution itself details a little bit about the city's history, and, you know, you go back to 1912 and 1913, when Luella Johnston was the first woman in a major city within the United States to be elected to a city council. And I remember a couple of years ago, we had a commemoration of her life and a permanent plaque over at Old City Hall. And I guess, how does one define progress? Define progress in part by seeing, not just in our city, but throughout the country, women majorities, and that not being such a breakthrough. It is a breakthrough, but not being such a breakthrough because it's the way that it should be. We still have a lot of barriers left to break in our country. Obviously, there's never been a woman president of the United States or a woman governor of California, and so many other breakthroughs that are to be had. But it's important that we just reflect on the fact that this country, this state, and even this city was not always what it is today, and to recognize that there are still lots of things we need to fix when it comes to gender and gender equality. And certainly, in a few moments, we're going to present another resolution. Councilmember Kaplan, that speaks to the importance of civil rights for our transgender community. And so, always when it comes to civil rights, so much to celebrate, commemorate, and so much more work to do. And it's in that spirit that I am glad to present March 2023 as Women's History Month here in the city of Sacramento. Thank you. I'm not sure who I'm presenting it to, but maybe I should present it to my majority-women colleagues here on the city council. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think one of them has their hands up.
Oh, do people want to speak? So, please, go. I just want to say for the record, I was asked to present this, so I --
Thanks, Mayor. I think I'm next in the queue, so I'll go next. Just thank you so much. That was super eloquent, and I really just wanted to take this moment to say Happy Women's History Month to everyone here, to all of my colleagues on the dais, to all of the women identifying, a city staff that's actually here with us today. I see them in the audience, many of our department heads, folks that's on the dais now, Susanna and Mindy, and all of our city staff that works incredibly hard to make sure that we move the city forward. I just want to say thank you so much. You know, you are the reasons why our community is much richer and the world more meaningful. And so, I really just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. And I also just wanted to say, you know, while we recognize the contribution of women this month, and we really celebrate Women's History Month, I also want to take this time to reaffirm our commitment to advancing rights and opportunities for women and girls. You heard earlier from the mayor that we've made tremendous milestones, but we still have a lot of work to do. And despite the progress, again, we still have a lot of work. We know that there are still many disparities that still exist, even among women. In our last workforce diversity and salary audit that was shared last summer, there was a huge pay gaffe between women and men in our city. The report revealed that white women make 75 cents to the dollar compared to white men, which is a huge disparity. But if you actually dive deeper into the data, you'll find that indigenous black women make 55 cents, Latinas 53 cents, and Native Hawaiians 47 cents to the dollar of white men, and even lesser. And so, you know, this also doesn't even include our transgender women, our gender non-conforming folks as well. And so, I just want to, you know, while we celebrate our wins, I think it's also an opportunity for us to pause and reflect on really the challenges that we still have ahead. This month is Women's History Month, right? And I often want to also take this moment to say that oftentimes, when we look at history, many women of color have been ignored in our history books, many whom I have heard through my aunties, through mentors, through my ethnic studies professor, of folks who have been on the front lines that are not in our history books, fighting and securing rights and opportunities for so many of us in terms of civil rights, in terms of racial justice, in terms of just caregivers and abolitionists, right? Abolitionists. Really want to take this moment to really center all of them. Celebrating Women's History Month, for me, is really also acknowledging the complexity and the intersectionality of all of identities, right? And women just being one of them. So, again, I want to take this moment to say Happy Women's History, History Month to everyone, and let us continue to do the hard work to make sure that there's liberation for everyone, for all women, for all trans folks, for everyone that doesn't feel like they belong in this country. And so, Happy Women's History Month, and really looking forward to continuing the hard work that needs to be done to make sure that everyone in the city and this country and this world can thrive. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Well said. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor, and couldn't agree more with our Mayor Pro Tem Vang. Thank you for elevating that. And I actually wanted to -- well, one, I want to just reflect on this moment as we sit with five women majority on this council. You know, it's been talked about a lot that this is the second time in the history of Sacramento. The first time was before I was born, and I don't know if you, many of you know that, but it is true. And so, we have a lot of work to do, but glad to be here and to reflect in that moment. You also mentioned Luella Johnston. I don't -- this was several years ago now, but that work was actually done through an organization called Sacramentoity.org, which is something that we, that I used to write for, and a dear friend of mine, Nicholas Heidorn, who did the research and found out through our own history library that there was a woman named Luella Johnston that was elected to the city council, and I believe it was in 1912, and that was years before women suffrage federally. And so, we asked ourselves a question at the time. We said, "We think this might have been the first person to get elected, woman, to be elected to the council in Sacramento." We determined that was true. And then we said, "Well, we think this might be the first woman elected in California," and we determined that that was true. And we were like, "Wait, we think this might be the first woman to get elected in the United States of America." And while we don't have a definitive answer to that, we did, we were able to do research on the top 50 most populated cities at the time. And so, I think unless we're proven wrong, it's very possible that Luella Johnston was the first woman ever elected to any government body in the United States of America. And so, that was amazing work that was done, and putting that plaque on Old City Hall, then city council member, now Senator Angela Gashby. So, just want to reflect on that moment, taking the time to look at our history and to ensure that we are building up and elevating the stories of the women in our own communities as well as those that happen nationally. So, really, really grateful for this moment, and Happy Women's History Month.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. I just want to follow up with what my colleagues alluded to. You know, it's very concerning that we're in 2023, we're still having this conversation. And I think every day should be a woman's month or day. It should be automatic by now. But unfortunately, it's still an uphill battle. But I'm glad to see that within this country or this environment, we have individuals, mayor and my colleagues, that will fight for this and continue fighting for this. But let us not forget the women in other countries that do not have a voice, that do not have a representation. So, I think as one of the greatest countries on our planet, it's also our responsibility to be a voice for them. Because in 2023, for us to even assume or think there's a difference between a man and a woman, it's just going backwards. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm definitely honored to be here today with this reso, but I just wanted to make sure that we also be the voice of the women in other countries that are heavily suppressed.
Very good. Why don't we have the five women come to the front here?
I would also love our city staff.
And our city staff, our city leadership, thank you, to come on up. The men will --
Megan, Jackie, Monica, I see you over there. Yes.
Come on. You guys all go down, and we will -- All right, thank you. That's a great start. Let us move now to equally important resolution tonight. I want to turn it over to Councilmember Lisa Kaplan to present a resolution on Transgender Visibility Week. And I know I want to add some comments. I'm sure my colleagues do as well. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And more importantly, Mayor, thank you for co-sponsoring this with me. We are making history tonight. Let that sink in. We're in 2023, and we still have to fight for equality, and more so for those who people other than in this room deem not worthy. This is a week of visibility, of recognizing our transgender community. This is not about a day. This is about taking the step of a week. And it should be said, we have a national leader in this room. Thank you. Thank you, Evan Mitten, for your leadership, not only here in Sacramento, but in the United States, to make sure that every one of our transgender community members and nonconforming community members is seen. For those in the room tonight, I see you. Friends that I have known in the LGBTQIA community for a long time, I see you. Like, this is an honor for me, as a cisgender woman, to stand here and say we have to do more. But it's not just saying no more hate, no more discrimination, but to celebrate your contributions to our society. That matters. Your story matters. History matters. Stonewall riots was led by our transgender community. That history matters. So, it's not only today that we look at this, of what can we more as a city do for our staff and for our community so that they know that they are loved, they are safe? You matter, because we have to stand up and say no more, and that no more comes when you become visible. You don't need to hide behind any door. This is what we should be doing in leadership, because the 20 years I spent on school board, I knew how important it was to protect our kids and how important GSA clubs were. So, thank you, Board President of the SacCity Unified, Trustee Chinra Rhodes, for SacCity Unified leading the way.
Chinra.
That matters. So, today is not just about looking and celebrating when 2009 Rachel Crandall said, "We need to have an International Day of Trans Visibility." This is about saying, and the resolution before us, in which the mayor proudly came on, because we're proclaiming not just the International Day on March 31st, but the next week after that. And we're going to be raising the transgender flag, to say that the city of Sacramento, love is the answer, visibility is the answer, acceptance is the answer, because we're going to get more done with love than hate. And more importantly, to our young students and young individuals who are here in the audience, you matter. Your life matters. As a leader, it is my responsibility to make sure that we create a city that is safe for you, so that you feel free to live your life and you have the same civil justice protections as everyone else. That matters. Today matters. And so, I, this is, this is very, I'm so honored to help bring this forward, and I know I'm not alone on the council with that. I think it's maybe something we should have the council speak before I bring up Evan Mitten or --
Well, why don't, why don't we bring up Evan first, and then I'll, then we'll turn it over to the council.
Thank you so much. I'm Evan Mitten. My pronouns are he and they. Thank you so much to Councilmember Kaplan, Mayor Darrell Steinberg, for supporting and sponsoring this time-sensitive, important, and historic resolution. Thank you to all of my friends and allies on the dais, including my own council member, Councilmember Valenzuela. Thank you to friends and community in the chambers and watching at home. Please stand up for a second. I had remarks prepared, and I scrapped them this morning when this resolution sunk in at a deeper level, because this resolution doesn't just matter to the moment that we're in, but it also matters to our future. Transgender people currently find ourselves at the center of a war not of our choosing. We're only two months into 2023, and over 400 anti-transgender bills have been introduced across the nation, and that number is rising daily. In Sacramento, our community continues to struggle for visibility. It continues to struggle for health care. It continues to struggle against homelessness, against poverty. It continues to struggle for restroom access in schools. Cumulatively, all of this together puts trans people's lives at risk, and it tries to rob us from living our most authentic, happy, and healthy lives, especially our trans youth. What does this resolution means to the future? It means that we have a full week expanded into, one day into a full week of a city-recognized festivities, events, and more, to reflect, to celebrate, and to plan for the future. And so, I want to bring a voice of the future up with me today, and that is a local high schooler. His name is Quinn Buz, and I met Quinn and his mom when they came to me and said that they wanted to do something special for Trans Day of Visibility this year. Quinn?
Councilmembers, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. Councilmember Kaplan and Mayor Steinberg, thank you for bringing forth this resolution. Evan Mitten, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the council. My name is Quinn Buz, and I am a proud trans man. As anti-trans bills rise in the nation, I deeply thank you for considering the proposed resolution to help protect our humanity, existence, and joy. Our existence is not to be silenced, it's to be lifted, elevated, and shouted from the rooftops. So much of the anti-trans legislation sweeping throughout the nation is crafted in such a way to snatch clear joy, to snatch our bright-colored, multifaceted existence that brings an array of possibilities to society and the liberation of society. To be trans is to experience the world's expectations and knit our skin and bend those expectations into vibrant cloth. It's to struggle quietly in the night while thoughts swirl, trying to piece together who we are, and to wake up in the morning and exuberantly claim ourselves. It's to bow and honor brave brown and black trans individuals who have brought us to where we are today and helped carry their legacy with them. At the heart of this resolution is the essence of trans joy and the celebration of it. I thank you for taking steps to recognize trans joy and help us bring it into the light to shine on other trans individuals, to weave a network of love into our society by uplifting trans week of visibility. Thank you.
That was your first time speaking before city council, but you did a great job. Turn it over to members of the city council for comment. I know I'll make a comment or two, but let me first turn it over to Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. And I can't say anything better than my colleagues have said and that Evan Mitten has said, but I just wanted to say that I'm so proud to have stood in support and written in letters to the Sacramento Unified Resolution and was glad to see that passed, glad to see this here today, and just really want to acknowledge the power of the activism and the advocacy in this room, the people that are standing out here right now, including Evan and others. You know, even a few years ago, we have seen such coordination among all levels of government together at one time, all saying the same thing. And so, that lends itself to you and all the work that you have done to make this happen, so I'm really grateful. I also really just wanted to elevate that I love that is a part of this process, that you're elevating the youth voice as well. Really amazing to see our young people come and get engaged in government, and to know that we see you, we hear you, we love you, and we want to see you supported. So, thank you for being here. Thanks for your work, and I stand in strong support of this resolution.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for bringing this item to our council. I am so heartened to see the room of people here today, because, like so many of you, have dedicated so much of your life and your time towards advocacy, paid and unpaid, right? Showing up, doing the work, little, small, big, ways, all in between. And that really gives me so much heart, and a day when you look at the media and you just see story after story after story of horrible things happening around the country, it really does remind us that we are in an amazing community, and we're so lucky to be here in Sacramento, not just with community advocates, but even other electives. I see a new trustee, Vargas, is here as well. I see new trustee, Singh, is in the back with SacCity Unified. I mean, just this, we are presenting a really united front, and so much of that is due to the organizing around these resolutions, which seem so ceremonial, but it does carry that weight to say, "No, say the thing," right? Say the thing out loud, that you support our trans community and that you're going to take the steps. And I think one of the things that was so impressive in addition to this room was all of the emails that I got about this resolution, all in support, and with stories and with ideas, and so many of them reminding us beyond this day of visibility, what it means to show up as allies, what it means to address policy around housing and homelessness, around safety, around economic opportunity, around investment. I mean, access to joy, I love the way you frame that, because it's that that means so much more than just, you know, the recognition. It means being proactive and being a partner and being a true, someone you know you can call, and that we're going to show up and do what we need to do. So, I'm just really encouraged and heartened by this. I just really want to thank the community for showing up here tonight, showing up before tonight, showing up after tonight. I think we're sending a clear message here in the city of Sacramento, and I'm really proud that one of my constituents was a part of organizing this group tonight, but I see so many of you in the audience, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. I think my colleagues really said it so eloquently, and just also really wanted to take this opportunity to thank Evan and all of our community leaders that are here today, just really for your steadfast advocacy to support all of our communities and especially our transgender community. Also want to give a shout out to trustee Chinua Rhodes and just Singh as well, our trustee at SacCity Unified School District, working closely with Evan, really to pass that historical resolution and setting really, you know, setting the example of what all school districts should be doing in this region and throughout the state. Great that our city is also taking the stands, but definitely starts in our schools first, right? And so, you know, our trans youth, our trans community deserve dignity, joy, as we heard from our very eloquent young speaker, many of whom are just fighting to exist and be who they are. As I said earlier, you know, we still have a long way to create a world where everyone, especially our trans community, know that they belong. Evan, thank you so much for sharing just the challenges that we still have ahead, and I hear that we're still fighting discrimination, you know, against our trans community. And I hear that we're still fighting discrimination, you know, against our trans community in public housing, in employment, in healthcare, and even in public spaces like our restroom. And so I just want to take this time to say thank you, to you, to everyone, to our allies, to, to all the leaders that are not in this room but also watching, that's fighting the hard fight every single day. Really also want to take this moment to center all of you as well. And so, thank you, Councilwoman Kaplan and Mayor, for, for bringing this resolution to the council. This won't be the, the first or the last and I'm looking forward to many more weeks and years to come as we continue to do this work together. Thank you.
Just briefly to say thank you to Councilmember Kaplan for bringing this forward, to all my colleagues here. This is unanimous. It will be unanimous. And Chinua, thank you so much for leading the way at the, at the school board, for making this most important statement. I'm focused and to the community for coming out tonight in large numbers, because this is much more than a resolution. And what I note, I always try to look at the words themselves. You deliberately chose the word visibility. Transgender Visibility Week. And I think that is not only an appropriate, but a really necessary choice of words. Because there is an ill wind blowing in our country. And Evan, you alluded to it a moment ago. And you know it, but let's just say it out loud. We are in a fight. We are in a fight for the civil rights of, 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 of American people. And we only need to look at history and look at how the lack of visibility, the lack of visibility has led to terrible consequences for people. When LGBTQ Americans were in the closet, they were told and believed that they were not to be visible. I mean, almost literally, in the closet. When African-Americans in, throughout much of our history were told that you cannot be in the same place as white Americans, they were told not to be visible. When Holocaust throughout the world have occurred, has always occurred with the same evil foundation, that the, that the victims are never to be seen because they're less than human, not to be visible. And so, your choice of this word is so important because what you are saying loud and clear is see us, respect us, treat us equally and with dignity. And that is a battle always worth having. And in this city, you know, we have our differences and our disagreements up here and in the community and it's, it's a political town, it's a capital. There is one thing we never fall short on, and that is standing up for each other. That's civil rights. Civil rights are not negotiable, ever. So I want to thank you for making sure that the transgender communities throughout Sacramento are visible in every way, here tonight, throughout the community, throughout the year, until we beat back these 400 bills. And, and undoubtedly more to come. Thank you very much. Do we vote on this or no? This is not a vote? Okay, well, I deem this to be a unanimous vote of the City Council, so there. But let's, let's go take a picture, please. The community den, please, everybody, come on up.
Hi, John. Yeah? Daryl. Everybody?
Hi, Daryl.
Hi, Mayor. Do you want me to get a picture?
This has to be the best picture ever.
Yes.
All right, right here we go. All right, one, two, three. Oh, my bad, my bad, my bad. Hey, there you go. Beautiful. All right, here we go, right here. One, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Yeah, one more, one more. One, two, three. Got it. Thank you.
Oh, wait, hold on, doesn't fit everyone.
Need a wide screen on this one.
Everybody squeeze in a little bit more.
There you go, that's better.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Members, Councilmember Laloey asked me if, if, if he could give a brief New Year's greeting for Persian New Year. And I said, without objection, of course, I think that would be, that would be appropriate and wonderful, so. We're, we're running the clock on you, by the way. Okay, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to take this time to wish the Iranian and Afghan communities and all the people around the world who celebrate in Nooruz a very happy new year. Let's hope and pray that this is the year where we get, we get to take our countries back from the most ruthless governments in our history. May the new year bring health, prosperity, and happiness and keep all our voices louder than ever with the message of woman, life, freedom. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you so much.
And also, I just want to, Ramadan is in, in March 22nd, so I want, I want to wish the Muslim community a very happy Ramadan. So thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you so much. Councilmember Laloey, a wonderful new year to the Iranian people, the Persian community, and Ramadan Mubarak. Absolutely. Okay. Let's move to the consent calendar. And again, I'm going to entertain a motion to continue item seven for a week as part of the consent calendar. I hope that's not controversial. But let's hear from members. I know, Councilmember Valenzuela, you were up first before...
I raised my hand, you told me to put it down. I was like, it's okay. Yeah, no, that's good. No, I appreciate it. No, no, I'm going. I, no, I wanted to pull item two.
Okay, item two, okay? To pull for a separate vote?
Yes, in discussion.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Maple.
Also just had comments on item two, so.
Okay, we'll get to that then when we do it. And then Vice Mayor?
No, comments on item two as well.
What's that?
Comments on item two.
Comments on item two. Okay, so let's, let me...
Mr. Mayor, item number four, I just, I don't want to pull it, I just want to make a comment.
You want to make a comment? Okay, so could I get a motion, please, for, to approve consent calendar items one and three through six?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, okay. Before we hear that, let me hear from Councilmember Laloey on item number four.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Item number four, it's, it's a project that we've been working on for almost a year and I'm, I'm so grateful to our economic development, Mike Jasso, Leslie Fritches, my staff. We are very excited that one of the parcels on Del Paso Boulevard was recently purchased by SKK Development. And we're anticipating roughly about 200 units of market rate and low-income housing combined to be built on the Boulevard. This is a project that we've been working on for, as I said, over a year and, you know, shout out to my staff. I want to thank Mr. Ross Wailuda, who was a private landowner that had to come into the mix to make this happen. I want to congratulate SKK for making the decision. And I also want to tell them that their timing couldn't be better because they got a great deal and by the time this announcement goes up, probably some of these rates are going to come up. So this is, this is a great move on, on their part, too. But very excited and we're looking at this project to move forward where it's a mixed use. Already, my office is getting calls about potential restaurant, restaurants that want to come to the Boulevard. So yes, very exciting. And D2 is open for business. So developers, business operators, please, come on down. We'll make it happen. And within the next few weeks, my office is going to come in, in front of my colleagues and we're going to discuss community land investment in District Two, where we have a proposal where we can bring our residents and make them real estate investors and try to close down that generational wealth gap. So something to be continued, but I'm very excited about SKK. And I want to thank Mr. Saturi for believing the Boulevard. And this is what makes him so great. As we were talking about projects that are coming up, then his next, one of his biggest concern was, what about parking? Where are people going to park? And his next proposal was, we need to build a parking where people that are going to come walk down the Boulevard or can safely park and people that are going to be residing in these apartments around the Boulevard, they can also park. So I'm grateful to his partnership with District Two and looking forward to many more. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. That's great news. Councilmember Maple, on item four or on item two? On item two. Okay, let's, let's first take public testimony on the consent calendar items that are up for a motion and a vote, which again is item one and three through six.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind members of the public, if you want to speak on an agenda item, when the item begins, if you are in council chambers, fill out a speaker slip. If you are in Zoom, raise your hand. After the first speaker, we will no longer accept speaker slips and the raise hand feature in Zoom will be disabled. So it looks like I have four speakers in chambers. So Samuel Lewis is speaking on item one, five, six, and eight. Jamie Vasquez will be the next speaker. Samuel Lewis? Samuel Lewis?
I'm coming. I'm right here. Thank you, thank you. Can I have, I have something to share, if that's okay? Thank you. Oh, shit. I wasn't there before. I'm ready when you guys are.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon, City Councilmembers and Mayor. My name is Samuel Lewis. My pronouns are they/them. I'm a black, trans, non-binary, queer individual and I'm here today to uplift my trans, queer siblings in Sacramento and show the council what a real transgender visibility looks like. March 29th, I will be one year on testosterone, one year of getting life-saving, gender-affirming care. Never in my life have I felt physically more aligned with my whole being. I want to say that without gender-affirming care that I've received in the last year, my likelihood of being alive today would be much, much smaller. The most revolutionary thing that you can do in your lifetime is be authentically yourself, being black, trans, and queer in a, in a country built off of white supremacy as the normality is a revolutionary act of defiance. Simply by living in your truth, you show white America and everywhere else in the world that perpetuates fascist colonialism that you will not be confined into the boxes that chained in my enslaved ancestors. I am a revolutionary. I denounce anything that belittles my handsome authenticity. I will not be shoved into the closet and have the key be thrown away. I will be loud, brave, seen, and heard by my communities. I will not be silenced. You will not eradicate me. As of March 2nd, Human Rights Campaign reports over 300-plus anti-LGBTQ bills under consideration and state legislators, state legislators across the country with nearly 150-plus directly targeting transgendered people. Human Rights Campaign documented that there has been at least six violent killings of transgendered and gender nonconforming people in the United States alone in 2023. Their names are listed here. We know those numbers are most...
Your comments, your time is complete.
Awesome.
Our next speaker is Jamie Vasquez. And then MVW. And if staff will put the timer on screen, please. Jamie Vasquez, MVW, and Ron Elmsley.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and City Council. I want to give, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Jaime Vasquez and I represent Norca Carpenters out of Local 46 in Sacramento County. And I'm here speaking on how District Two was talking about these new developments coming up with that. We need local labor area standards and I would like, it would benefit the community now and in the future. So one would be local hire. This allows workers and their families to work in the community that they live in instead of having to commute long hours. Also giving healthcare to workers and their families. I say this because 26% of construction workers in California lack healthcare insurance. That's two and a half times the rate of, for all California workers. I think that's unacceptable. In addition, the use of apprenticeship programs. Success depends on apprentices being able to secure work opportunities. With work opportunities, apprentices are likely to leave the industry for lower-paying careers. Policies such as prequalifications help ensure the contractors hire apprentices and are doing their part to build our community's construction workforce. By requiring these developers to choose responsible general contractors moving forward with these new development properties, you will ensure that these men and women building the work are not taken advantage of. I believe the prequalification language will help ease the housing burden and will raise the standards in the construction industry. And thank you for your time. That's all I got.
Thank you for your comments. The last speaker for the consent calendar in chambers is MVW and I have Mr. Elmsley on number eight. So MVW, and then we'll go online to call in user two, then PJ.
The last time Denise spoke to Lowe's and Fish's staff in late October, she told them she was going to die outside. Several days later, she froze to death at a bus stop outside of the hospital. It is the third unhoused person since the beginning of this year to die of hypothermia. She was found November 4th at an unknown time. The weather was only 42 degrees outside, but the low was 32 that night. It was cold enough to cause hypothermia, but it wasn't cold enough for y'all to open up public buildings as walk-in warm-in centers. In late October, she was kicked out of a shelter. She showed up at Mary House crying. She says she needed to get back, but they wouldn't let her in. Your shelters wouldn't let her back in. As she walked away, she said, if they don't let me back in, I swear I'm going to die out here. She died just days later. Her body was found at a bus stop at 29th and K Street near Sutter Medical Center at 1:17 PM in the afternoon. People had been walking past her body all that morning. She suffered from serious illnesses, including pancreatitis and thyroid, colon and foot issues. She used a wheelchair and walker at times. None of their guests have an easy time surviving. The streets of Sacramento are unlike many other cities. Like many of Sacramento's unhoused folks, she wanted to get indoors so badly. She had been the victim of domestic violence, and she was a widow.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is call-in user two.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert, and I, I couldn't catch the number, what City Councilman Laloe was talking about, but I wanted to comment on that. So I don't know the number, so I'm gonna proceed. From what I heard, and I'm on the road, but I, it sounds like it has great potential, and that's the key word, potential. You know, being a Grant Pacer alumni, we, we don't get excited until we win it all. You win it all, then you can get excited. So it's, it's a good step in the right direction, City Councilman Laloe, and I'm sure the mayor had something to do with it in, in, in the city council, because Marysville Quarter, I've known that street all my life, growing up kindergarten, I mean, elementary, junior high and high school. There's potential there. It was really live back in the 60s and 70s. They use all these eminent domains and gentrifications to run people out of business. So it's gonna be interesting to watch it. I hope you keep everybody in the loop. Mr. Laloe has a wonderful staff lead, Mrs. Johnson, and so just keep everybody in the loop. All this modern technology, there shouldn't be any confusion now on meetings and what needs to take place, but it sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. PJ is our final speaker on the consent calendar.
Yeah, I have to say that I appreciate the resolution on Trans Day of Visibility. I appreciate your recognition of trans folks in spite of the mass movement against them and against the broader queer and LGBT community across this country. We need your support at all times. I would hope that you could keep in mind that a large chunk of LGBTQ folks, especially queer and gender nonconforming folks, are the ones who are kicked out of their homes when they come out, who end up on the streets here, homeless, who are targeted by police because of its patriarchal structure, which treats harshly any gender nonconforming individuals. I would appreciate if you could keep that in mind when you look at your homeless and police policies in the future, keeping in mind that if you are keeping in line with what you are saying here, that those policies should be addressed accordingly to ensure future policies which may impact those who have already been harmed by coming out, and that those policies wouldn't then harm them all over again as they are at the end of a police baton, a harmful carceral system, or a homeless process which does the bare minimum to help them off, up off the streets. Also, we'll be back next week to discuss item seven, despite your attempts to limit public input by moving it around to minimize the impact we can have. We see you, we see your deception, and we will continue to mobilize people in spite of your attempts to minimize our impact. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on consent.
Right, thank you. We do have a motion and a second on consent calendar items one and three through six. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. Those items pass. Now let's go to item two, which several councilmembers asked to be discussed or taken up separately. Councilmember Maple, do you want to? You were first? Okay, Councilmember.
I'd like to seek my time.
Councilmember Valen, I'm sorry, it wasn't up here.
We all want to speak on this. It's gonna be a race to the mic.
Councilmember Valenzuela, then Maple, then Telemontes.
Yeah, and I really want to thank Local 39 for reaching out so promptly on this item. I may have been out of town at a restaurant on a Friday night, but I took the call, and really would have missed this, and, and I'm sure we voted on contracts like this before, where it seems very procedural administrative, we're approving a contractor to come in and help us with stuff that's beyond our capacity, but the dot connection for me was, I don't think I've spoken to anybody involved in urban forestry or public works in the city who isn't talking about a staffing problem. And the problem is systemic. It's, it's an issue that we're not retaining people. We're losing people to nearby companies. We're losing people, potentially to this company that we're contracting with, and this is absolutely no knock on this company at all. They, they appear to be a union rep organization. They are very well in good standing. This is about, you know, whether $4 million over two years would be better spent correcting the staffing issues. And so I'm sure that my colleagues will probably want to weigh in on this, but I would like to move to postpone this item. I, I mean, there's a lot of solutions we could pursue here between like a shorter contract so that we can use more of this money to help with staffing issues. Maybe we don't need a contract at all if we think there's some immediate steps that could be taken. I just, I, I'm making that motion because I think that there's a conversation that needs to be had, and $4 million is, is a lot of money, um, and over two years, and that's, I think, as if I remember correctly from the letter we got sent today, that's more than two of the bargaining units got combined last year. And so it's an opportunity for us as a council to step back and, and really ask our city manager to work with, you know, Local 39 and, and our urban forestry team to see if there's something else we could be doing and using this money for so that we can try to keep more of these services in-house. So I'll stop there and let my colleagues.
I'll go second.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved, um, moved and seconded. I got councilmember, I'm not sure, I don't want to.
Maple.
Maple, then Gueda, then Telemontes?
I'll go. Thank you, Mayor, I really appreciate it. I want to echo some of the colleagues, comments that my colleague made, but I also want to speak more, more broadly on this issue. I think that, you know, staffing challenges is not something that we're seeing just in this department. It's certainly not something we're seeing just in this city, so I didn't want to say that outright. This is an issue that's happening at public and private entities all over the United States of America. However, what I'm very cautious of and deeply concerned about is making sure that as we see these staffing challenges, as we see a department that used to have 55 people on the team, or on this particular team, dwindle down, that we are not replacing that labor with contractors, because I hear our workers and they tell us, hey, I have somebody working alongside me that makes more money than me, that's being employed through a city contract. And I think that goes against our stated goals on, in terms of our labor goals and, you know, and I know this is not something that we're gonna fix overnight. And so, you know, after talking with the team on this, this is a version, an increased version of a contract that's been around in some form for almost 20 years, according to the team, and it's been of great help during times when we really needed it. So after this storm, there's really no way that our city would have recovered at the pace and time that it needed to if not for some of this work through this union company. But I want to elevate that we should always be working towards the goal of ensuring that we have staffing of city, union employees to do this work to the extent that we can. And so I'm just really curious about, you know, what our, you know, staffing and retention plan is around this team in particular, but also, you know, as we work through these processes, you know, in our union contracts and everything else, how are we gonna make sure that we are not supplementing or supplanting the work of our, our union city employees with contracts?
So I'm gonna, the city manager I know wants to make some comments here, maybe he'll answer those questions. Why don't we hear from Councilmember Telemontes, and then I'll turn it to you. And Gueda? Sorry, it's not up here, so it's, it's.
We are, I'm with the city manager's speakers.
Well, unless the vice mayor wants to go for next.
Yeah, no, I think my colleague, Councilmember Maple, I think asked a very relevant question. I do want to give the city manager the opportunity to discuss this, and I think, first of all, I want to thank, I spent the weekend with our, many of our arborists team and folks in urban forestry who were out, not only just addressing the, the impacts from the storm, but actually planting more trees, like, you know, addressing that issue. And, and to that point, I, I, you know, and I mentioned this to the city manager, it's a systemic problem, even with his predecessor, where, you know, we've had this issue and, where we find ourselves today. But I think Councilmember Maple asked the, the relevant question, so I'd like to pass it over to our city manager here to discuss this, because it, it really, this, this is a, a, a challenge where I've, I've consistently brought this point up over the last few years about how we are addressing some of our, our, some of our lowest-paid workers and our hardest-paid workers.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mayor, Council, so I agree with everything that's set up here. It is not ideal for us to be before you with a two-year contract, $4 million, but I also want to point out that it's an up to $4 million, so it's not a guaranteed contract. We spend as much as we need, and I also remind that following the storms, we're not out of the woods yet. We've got many, many months ahead of us, and we need to have some flexibility with a contract like this so that we can kind of taper, if you will. We have a closed session being scheduled next week to talk about compensation and union contracts. We have 11 of them due. I'll be seeking some authority from this body to negotiate, so, you know, this idea of making sure that we pay our lowest-paid workers appropriately, I think is spot on. But it's also in the complete control of this council. You know, when we, we're gonna be presenting you with the financials surrounding all of our union agreements and what we think we need to do in order to make it right by our lowest-paid workers. There's another dynamic here, and if you recall, I invited you all to a, a breakfast down at the South Area Corp yard to recognize and thank our storm responders. There are about 400, mostly Local 39 employees, and you heard directly from them that they feel like, you know, they're not being paid competitively. There's, I've been talking to the, the SMUD general manager, Paul Lau. He too is having a similar situation. With the fires, you know, the, the, over the last several years, PG&E is scrambling to get, you know, tree trimmers, electricians, utility workers, and so they're paying more. And that, that's creating this, this pull from SMUD, and so SMUD has had to increase their rates. And so it's a domino effect, because now it's impacting us. We have our employees that are looking at contractors like this, along with SMUD and others. It is, it is really a vexing problem, but I, I think, I know there's been a motion and a second. I would strongly, strongly recommend we approve this contract as is, because it's an up to $4 million contract. And, you know, and I can even come back and do check-ins every $500,000 before we take the next step, so that this council is comfortable that we're doing things to address the longer-term issues. And in the background, and this is prior to this council being seated, we did a class and compensation study that looks at many of the classifications across the organization to see how we compare with our neighbors, the private sector, and, and others. And so there's gonna be a number associated with just bringing our, our current workforce, not just Local 39, but all of our employees. We've got 5,000 employees plus, up to that level, and that, I don't know what that number is yet, but we're working with our consultants to get us that number. That's gonna be part of the conversation in closed session. We want to take care of our employees 100%. You had me sold. This has been my battle cry for the last six years, but sadly, it's not, we don't have infinite resources, so it's a function of this council deciding what, what it is we want to spend our dollars on. And so I, I would implore you to pass this contract as is.
Can I follow up on this one for Howard, please?
Yep.
Mr. City Manager. So, timing is everything in life, right? And as you said, and I'm glad you said it, because we've been talking about it, that next week you're gonna go to closed session with the city council to have the council provide parameters to, for the negotiations, with all our, our public employee unions, public safety, of course, police and fire, but also Local 39 and the other non-public safety unions. And we all believe, I think, because you hear it everywhere, right, that paying our workers more money is absolutely essential, and it is a priority. We also know that when we pay them more, we'll be able to attract and retain more, more workers and thus have less of a need to contract out. So I just wonder this. After me? Is that okay? Did I step in front?
Yes.
Okay, I'd, I'd be happy to turn it, I'd, I'd be happy to turn it to you.
Thanks, Mayor. I let the city manager speak, and then, and then my name got taken off the can. Yes, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
I apologize.
No, you're good.
No, I, I just wanted to ask whether an alternative here, since, as you say, it's up to $4 million, what if we did say, just this week, just this week, so that we could get through that closed session and begin the bargaining, that we'd give you the authority up to $500,000 so that there's no interruption? Oh, I'm sorry.
You beat me, man!
I didn't mean to.
You're good.
No, you take it from here, Karina. You go ahead. You go right ahead.
I'd like, I'll.
You, you go right ahead.
Well, yeah, we're gonna amend the motion.
I want to hear from, let's hear from Howard first.
Let me say my comments first. Um, you know, for me, it's not long ago that we called ourselves the City of Trees. I know we're now Farm to Fork, but I still prefer the City of Trees, I'm not gonna lie. But our tree-lined parks, streets, and natural areas are vital parts of the fabric of Sacramento, and a job working for the city and taking care of our trees should be a career that reflects the value it adds to our communities. And our responsibilities as stewards of our constituent tax dollars is to protect our trees and the workers doing so directly. And so I do believe that we need a robust urban forestry department, and we need to make sure that we can hire our employees, retain our employees, and support our employees here at the city. And I just don't see the need to address the current situation with trees with an arrangement like this. And so, um, you know, I think we could do a better problem, or a better job to prevent the problem this contract proposes to solve. And so with that, friendly amendment to $500,000. Councilwoman Valenzuela?
Accepted.
Just, just so I'm clear, the, the motion is to do in $500,000 chunks, up, up to the $4 million if needed.
So I'm amending my motion to pass the contract up to $500,000 with the approval of my second.
Come back in three weeks after the, the idea thing is to come back in a month after the negotiations have progressed some, and then let's assess where we are in terms of the additional authority that you might need.
Sure, and maybe, I'll defer to Kevin if he wants to come and talk to about that, but I don't know if $500,000 is gonna get us through negotiations, recruitment, and hiring, and retention, that.
Okay, how long would $500,000 last us?
Well, I think, well, I think, Mayor, I mean, we're kind of, we're piggybacking off of the city manager's suggestion, was that he come to us if he needs more than $500,000.
Yes.
So if you need an extension as these conversations are going on, you can come to us for that extension. I think what we're saying is up to $500,000, not.
Initially.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's.
This is, we're only authorizing you to there for now.
Yes.
Wait, so I just want to clarify, because I, I hear two separate things. So are we potentially approving the $4 million contract? Okay, because I, I noticed some, some discussion of not aligning, so maybe it's, we approve a contract up to $1 million, but he has to come back to us if it hits $500,000 to go above $500,000?
I, I just think that if there's.
I think Karina had it right. I think she had it, I think.
Just $500,000.
If there's, if there's flexibility to come back above $500,000, I still want to hear from Ryan about where that gets us, because last thing I want to do is approve $500,000, burn through it, still are negotiating the contract, and then we get to the recruitment piece, that there's virtually gonna be no difference here. So Ryan?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Ryan Moore, Assistant City Manager. So $500,000 would get us through the rest of this fiscal year, which is important. The reason we're, we're on fumes right now, as you know, the storms through January and February, this contractor was integral in getting us to where we are now. Without them, we would still have trees laying on roofs, we would still have trees laying across, across streets, so they've been huge. I want, just one really, I think, important, important clarification. As a policy, this contractor does not recruit our staff. That's part of arrangement with them.
That's good to know. Okay, I think we have an accord here, and it's, it's Councilmember Telemontes's amendment, accepted by Councilmember Valenzuela, and seconded by Councilmember. I'm, whoever did what? But the bottom line is $500,000 as the limit, and then you can, in good faith, come back at the end of the fiscal year.
End of the fiscal year. Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Okay, very good. All right, is there public, do we have, we already did public testimony. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Councilmember Laloe?
Aye.
Sorry, aye, okay. All, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, nay. It passes unanimously. Okay, item seven, let's take a motion for a continuance of item six. We don't need it. It's continued to next. It's continued to next week. That, now let's move to the one discussion item, which is, which is rubbish.
It's rubbish.
It's rubbish, and that's not, that is not a editorial comment on the quality of the work.
Our tree arbust is leaving City Hall. Thank you, Kevin, for coming by.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Jose Mendez here with the Community Development Department, here today to recommend that this council authorize code compliance to, uh, the authority to abate weeds, rubbish, refuse and debris from undeveloped properties that constitute a public nuisance and a firehazard. We recognize that the current inclement weather does not provide the ideal conditions for property owners to cut weeds, um, at this moment from vacant undeveloped property. For this reason, the deadline to comply with the weed abatement requirements was delayed from April 15th to May 1st this year. Staff recommends this council consider any objections and comments related to this matter, and that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Let me bring it over to the council here. Uh, Madam Clerk, first of all, do we have members of the public sign up to speak?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I have two speakers on this item, Samuel Lewis and Ron Elmsley.
Mr. Lewis.
Samuel Lewis. And then Ron Elmsley.
Oh, here.
Samuel?
Yes, I'm right here. Um, can I get the projector thing again? Thank you.
Please proceed. Please proceed, we'll get it up on one of the screens.
Okay, no worries. Okay. Where I was, what I was saying, Human Rights Campaign documented that there has been at least six violent killings of transgendered and gender nonconforming people in the U.S. alone in 2023. Their lists, their names are right here. We know that those numbers are much, most likely much higher due to the lack of reporting and misreporting. And those report, the reported killings, almost all of those individuals are transgendered women of color, the highest being of black trans women. Human Rights Campaign documented at least 32 transgender and gender nonconforming people were killed in the United States in 2022. Remember, those numbers are much likely higher. Transgendered POC, a count of 81% of those known victims of 2022, and 59% of those victims were black. NCAVP, National Coalition of Anti-Violence, reports transgendered and people of gender, people, gender nonconforming individuals are seven times more likely to be victims of police brutality than cisgendered people. White trans people are twice as likely to be unemployed as a result of discrimination, with trans POC being four times more likely. Trans and LGBTQ+ individuals are two times more likely to experience mental health issues. Suicide is the leading cause of death for LGBTQ+ people ages 10 to 24. Over 60% of trans and gender nonconforming individuals reported engaging in self-harm in 2021. LGBTQ community are far more likely to experience poverty and homelessness, especially trans POC, the highest being black trans women, compared to their straight counterparts. LGBTQ and trans community face much higher levels of unemployment discrimination, housing discrimination and denial of adequate housing services. The reason I speak about these statistics is to be conscious of intersectionality and the whole truth that people in power are trying to eradicate queer and trans lives. We will not be silent.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. I do want to remember, my members of the public, this is on item number eight, which is 2023 weed and rubbish abatement. Ron Elmsley, are you speaking on item eight?
Good evening, Ron. And, uh, again, I, I want to remind folks that this is on the public hearing regarding weed and rubbish abatement.
I know.
Thank you.
Mr. Elmsley?
Yes. Okay. Um, I live in the Oak Park Ghetto, and, uh, we're underserved, and one of the departments that underserved is.
Mr. Elmsley, if you'll come forward, we can't hear you unless you speak into the microphones.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elmsley.
Uh, we're underserved because we have a hard time getting weed abatement to come out. They allow the weeds to fully mature, and then they start drying out, and then they go cut them. What's with this? You know, it's, there's herbicides that they could spray, but Oak Park gets dumped on because they drag their feet about doing anything. And, um, I think they're getting the raw deal. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Very good. Let me bring this over to the council. Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I had some questions regarding item eight. Um, I do, I got the list of the, the, are these just part land?
That's an, it's an inventory of all undeveloped property that we recognize, or the, the county assessor recognizes as undeveloped.
Okay. Um, because I also have a report on a particular address, which happens to be in my district, that has had issues since 2021 and has continued going. So that's why I wanted, I was wondering that, are we just talking about a land issue or we're talking about building issues as well?
Got it. It's, uh, undeveloped property only. These are, these are weed abatement requirements for anything that's not developed to be cut to avoid fire hazards.
Great, I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I would like to share this with you. Are you leaving right now?
No.
I'll give this to you before. Thank you, thank you very much, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Uh, if I could have a action from the council, we still need someone to open and close the, open and close the public hearing and move the item.
I'll open and close the public hearing. Second.
It, it's been, and, uh, I'm assuming Councilmember Kaplan, that you'll move the item, or?
Yes.
Yes, very good. It's been properly moved, second, the hearing's been opened and closed. Uh, if, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, measure passes. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Vice Mayor, the next item is council comments, ideas, questions and AB 1234 reports.
Councilmember Laloie, then we'll go to Councilmember Valenzuela, Talamontes, and then Maple. Councilmember Laloie.
Vice Mayor, I think this is for my.
Very good. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Awesome. Well, um, I guess I'm just informing, um, the public that we have used our new policy submission process twice this week. Um, once for, um, a resolution to support Local 1000 and their bargaining process, and another for a public bank. So looking forward to hearing those come to committee. I have an AB 1234 report. I went to Asilmar last week for an event hosted by CivicWell, which some of you may remember as a local government commission. I hope you all come next time. It's a policymakers' conference, so it's our colleagues from around the state of California. This year's theme was around creating sustainable solutions. It was a really good networking time, got to spend a lot of time with our SMUD board members, but also folks in other parts of the state that are working through similar challenges. So really excited that I got to participate in that and hope you all join us next March in Yosemite for the next policymakers' conference because I found it pretty valuable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember, and that is an amazing organization. It was unfortunate I couldn't make it this time. Councilmember Talamontes.
So last week I reported out that I was doing my 24-hour ride along with the fire department, and I survived. Um, I spent 24 hours at Station 15, um, home of the Nighthawks in South Atomas, and I want to give a special thanks to Captain Ryan Kakanondo, Engineer Jeffrey Coats, Firefighters Adam Van Sutch, Jacob Hines, Mike Phelan, Chris Sharon, Shane Leah and Justin Sylvia, our PIO, for hosting me, um, there at the station. Um, it was truly a memorable experience, and you know, it's one thing to read reports, listen to stories and hear about the fire department, but another thing to live a day in their shoes. And so I'm just really thankful for that experience and wanted to share about it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Talamontes. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so I did have a whole list of events, but I think I'll pause on that because I really wanted to, uh, elevate something that one of our speakers brought up earlier, which is about, um, the third unhoused person who lost their lives due to hypothermia in, in our city recently, um, and that really weighs, weighs on me. And I know there has been discussion, usually after storms or cold nights, or as we will soon, uh, sooner than we probably would like, approach over 100-degree days, many days in a row. And so I just, I know that there has been discussion around reopening that conversation about what triggers, what is the criteria. I know the city manager, you were interested in that as well, and I just really would like to see us, um, broach that conversation sooner rather than later so that we're not scrambling in the summer months, um, or now. Um, so as soon as we can have that conversation, I would really like that. Um, and then just a couple of quick events. Um, so we are having a discussion with the owners of the Panama Pottery Building, um, on Thursday, the 23rd. It's going to be at Hollywood Park Elementary. I'm really excited for this because, um, it is one of the most historic buildings in Sacramento, and they have some really exciting news to share that I will wait until a future meeting to share with you so I don't steal their thunder, um, but, uh, excited for that. And then we are hosting, or we, we're hosting a litter cleanup, um, on Mettlegate and Munson along with, um, Clean California on Friday at 9:00 a.m. So if you want to come join, please RSVP to District 5 at cityofSacramento.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Maple. Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem Miveng.
Thanks. Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. Um, uh, just some, some announcement events and then, um, just some direction. Uh, first, I'm really excited to be officially launching our heart and hustle scholarship for our youth and young leaders in our city, and in particular District 8. Uh, we're going to be awarding five scholarship, 1,000 each, to high school seniors who will be attending either a two-year, four-year college, or if they're interested in vocational technical, uh, schools. So just wanted to share that. Um, there is a prompt, uh, and you have to answer it. You could do it in a 1,000-word limit. You could do it via art, poem, skit, whatever you want to do, be creative. Um, but applicants must live in the district or attend school in District 8. Um, and applications are open right now, according to my staff, um, and deadline is May 5th at midnight. So really encouraging all of our young people who live or go to school in District 8 to apply for the scholarship. And then, secondly, uh, this Saturday, we have our South SAC tree planting happening at Cabrillo Park. Uh, that's 1825 67th Avenue, uh, in South Sacramento, uh, this Saturday from 8:45 to 12:00 p.m. So if you want to get down and dirty and plant some trees, um, especially in South Sacramento, to, in South Sacramento, because we know we have a lack of tree canopy there, uh, definitely come out for that. Um, and then lastly, I just have a direction for, um, our city manager. Uh, last November, the voters passed Measure L, the Sacramento Children Fund, um, and I want to ensure that we are meeting the required deadlines, uh, of the charter as approved by the voters in the city. And so, city manager, I'd like to direct you to bring back an implementation plan of Measure L, the Sacramento Children's Fund, with a timeline, staffing recommendation and a budget at our next Budget and Audit Committee meeting on April 4th, um, and then hopefully it will get moved to the full council for consideration. Um, this request is coming from both me and Mayor Steinberg as well. Um, I know that we have new procedures, um, so our office will also be submitting a form of request per council procedure as well, um, to make sure that we're going through the process, but wanted to just put that request on record as well because I know many community members have been, um, asking us, uh, what is the status on the Measure L implementation? And I think, uh, we owe it to them to bring it back and to really share what the timeline is, the staffing recommendation, really next step, to make sure, uh, that we deliver on the intent of Measure L. So.
City Manager Chan?
Yeah, that's consistent with our conversation, uh, Mayor Protem. Uh, I, I will not commit to that date and budget audit yet until I talk with the staff to see what's required to come back, but that, that is absolutely consistent with that.
Okay, thank you. Um, can you provide a reason, a reasonable date? Instead of, if it's not April 4th, I, I'd like to know what date would be possible.
Sure.
Okay, uh, by next week if possible?
You'll probably have it tomorrow morning.
That's great, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, uh, City Manager Chan. Thank you, Mayor Protem Vang. Uh, Councilmember Laloie.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. I also wanted to announce that, um, as District 2 knows, uh, with the, with the ARPA funds, we were, uh, able to secure approximately $10 million to be invested in our business corridor. Granted, um, uh, Mr. Mayor convinced me if we can do 5 million now and 5 million later, and I said, we can say no to our mayor. So, um, we actually allocated $2 million for, uh, Del Paso Boulevard and Marysville Boulevard, which is our business corridor, for the property owners to apply, uh, for matching funds up to $30,000 for, uh, facade improvement. So we're hoping that, uh, with a little bit of a facelift and some of these new projects, and I know that, uh, there's going to be another big announcement being made probably in two weeks, um, that we can turn our business corridor into a viable environment where we can make it into a destination for all the residents within our city to come and visit and enjoy their time. So that $2 million is, um, is on, uh, you can contact our office or simply go on our, uh, website and you'll get all the information, and it's very simple to apply for it. So I encourage every, um, property owner, um, within the business corridor to take advantage of this, uh, opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Laloie. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you so much. Um, just a couple announcements. This coming Saturday, um, our office is partnering with Caltrans and the River City Water Alliance to do a cleanup along Jack Rabbit Trail from 9:30 to 1:30. And fingers crossed, Mother Nature is doing a pause in the rain so that we can do, um, a little cleanup. Um, so, you know, power to Mother Nature doing the right thing so we can have a beautiful weekend. But also, um, my office, we are doing over the course of the next three months, but this month we are starting a women empowerment, uh, series. But it's also a lot about healthy versus unhealthy relationships. So on March 29th at Heron School from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., our first conversation is really focused at, like, healthy teen relationships because we noticed that when we are able to empower our parents of what a healthy relationship is, it lowers the, uh, percentage of domestic violence, um, that teens experience when they grow up to become adults, when they understand what healthy relationships are. So we are partnering with St. John's City of Refuge, Empower SAC, My Sister's House, Wellspring Women's Center, Weave SAC Family Justice Center and others. Um, I'm really excited. This is our first one. Uh, next one, all announced as we come in April, and we'll have another in May throughout my district, but everybody's invited because there is nothing more important than healthy relationships. And I can tell you, before I left the school board, my biggest concern this past year was noticing the rise in, um, unhealthy relationships in our high schools. The pandemic affected things, so I think we can do more, uh, to partner, to raise awareness on this. And then, um, I am having my first community conversation on, uh, Monday, April 3rd, and love to see my D1 constituents come out.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Kaplan, and I just can't express how important that conversation is. I know we, you know, we've had many of those with the Family Justice Center, and bringing that coalition together is, um, is a strong, uh, is a strong move here for our community. So, thank you. And Madam Clerk, uh, Councilmember Jennings also has an adjourned memory at the end of our, um, public comment. Um, that, um, I also, I have one, uh, District 6, uh, announcement here. One, it's the, uh, Clean California Community Day on Saturday at 9:00 a.m. the Clean California Community Day. On Saturday at 9:00 a.m., we're going to be cleaning up Highway 50 in partnership with my council office and the Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association. We'll be meeting on T Street and Croy Way, and then walking over and working with Caltrans as part of the governor's efforts to clean California. And also, I want to also congratulate all of our Little Leagues, College Glen Little League, and also Tahoe Park Little League, Tahoe Talik Little League that are doing their opening day. I know a lot of us got rained out, but it's great to see all the young folks out there enjoying the spring. With that, Madam Clerk, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you. The following item is public comment for matters not on the agenda. I have 10 speakers. Angela Gralva, Kyle Williams, and Ron Elmsley. Angela, and I apologize, I can't read your last name.
It's Gralva. Thank you so much for trying. Hello, members of the council. My name is Angela Gralva, and I want to speak to you about an incident that transpired, was very unsettling. And I want to thank Kirina Talamantes for, even though I'm not a member of your district, you took the time to reach out to me and listen to my story. So, that meant a lot to me. So I'm here today in honor of many women who have come before me despite fear, to tell my story and to report an assault by Councilmember Sean Laloie. At a joint, at a joint chamber mixer, Laloie made derogatory comments about my person and my body.
Yes, he did.
Some of which I will play for you. Before this evening, I had never met this man before. And, mind you, the part that I was able to record was after he had lowered his voice and changed his tone.
I don't, I don't know you. I don't, I don't know why you're bothering me. Look, you are here at a mixer, and you're spending your time talking so much.
I always want to.
What? You call me a disgusting pig. Did you call me a disgusting pig?
You are not a good human being.
And you know this because how?
Because of your reactions towards me, and you don't even know me.
That's right. I don't know you.
You're bad-mouthing me in front of somebody that.
I can talk to someone else. Why are you talking to me right now?
I'm standing here to tell you.
No, you were, you were talking to someone else, and we were talking. You were talking to someone else.
Because you were misinforming this gentleman about me and my characteristics.
So you came into our conversation?
No, I came to tell him, let him know what a big liar you are.
Okay. And I'm a disgusting pig.
So, I apologize for the limited time.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
And I ask you to take action.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Kyle Williams and Ron Elmsley.
I'm sure about you, Laloie.
Kyle Williams, Ron Elmsley. Kyle Williams, Ron Elmsley, then Samuel Lewis.
I think Mr. Williams is coming down.
Ironically, I brought in a day-timer quote here. "Women and men have to fight together to change society, and both will benefit. Partnership, not dependence, is the real romance in marriage." Muriel Fox. Thought it was kind of unique that, what you were talking about today. So, a lot of the stuff that we're talking about today, I think somebody mentioned, I thought I were already over all of this stuff, but I guess not. A lot of people haven't moved forward in life. Julia Newmar, a Catwoman in the 80s, minimized the use of leaf blowers in Los Angeles. In the 80s. And we haven't addressed it yet. We're still blowing dust around. And Katie Valenzuela doesn't answer my phone. I've been calling her for three to five weeks. And I don't know how many messages I've left. What do you think, Katie? Six? 10? Rumor has it, you only think from the left. You only deal with certain issues. I don't know what's going on here, but do you guys notice that at least four to six months, half of the year, dust is being blown around for no reason? All I'm asking for is to minimize the use of leaf blowers. I don't think this is that tough. If this never gets done by this council, anybody listening out there, could you please blow once a month, maybe till like July and August, when there actually is leaves? You could work on graffiti, planting, a lot of different options. And by the way, we need independents and Republicans in this room. It's very obvious that we have one train of thought, it appears, in this room. I like all trains of thought. I like independents, Democrats, Republicans. I don't know about you guys. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Ron Elmsley, then Samuel Lewis.
Appreciate that, brother. Amen.
District Three indicated that she had gone to ride along with the fire department? Well, you might have been, they might have been on their best behavior. The fire department, one time, when they had a new recruit, the old-timer said, you know, please excuse me. And he started playing with the woman's boobs as they were taking her to the hospital. In the past, they used to go downtown and cruise for women in the fire truck. What gets me off about this is I called them to transport my wife to a hospital. She had pneumonia. She was very ill. Actually, once she was administered, she was there for about four or five days. Basically, they told me to pound salt. The guy started saying, well, you know, a flu could last a month, and a cold could last a week. And, you know, and it just all turned south, and they boogied, and they had me sign something. I reported it to the, oh, what's it called, professional standards. Now, the city of Sacramento has, in the police department, they have professional standards, and they have internal affairs. The fire department only has one. So, nothing was done about it. They filled out, I guess each one filled out a slip, as I understand it. They made sure they jived and turned it in, and that's all. Oh, it sounds good. Let's see. They are really nasty people. The only, only one that would.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Next speaker, Samuel Lewis. Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, Samuel Lewis, then Lucian Mordecai.
I'm coming.
And please don't forget your flag.
Oh, I won't. Thank you.
Thank you. Samuel?
Something's on the projector again. Okay. The reason I speak about these statistics is because, is to be conscious of intersectionality and the cold truth that people in power are trying to eradicate queer and trans lives. We will not be silenced. We will not go back into the closet. We will not be eradicated. Forty-one states have been trying to pass anti-LGBTQ+ bills in the United States in 2023. My question to the council and the mayor, who's not here anymore, is what are you going to do to fight against housing, employment, and health discrimination affecting trans and queer community? And what will you do to fight far-right hate groups targeting local LGBTQ+ events and community members as the rise of hate-affiliated groups continue to show up in Sacramento? What will you do during Transgender Visibility Week that ensures the longevity of safety and equality to the trans community in Sacramento, not just for a week, for every following week after that? As anti-LGBTQ and trans bills grossly grow in legislation across the nation, how will Sacramento City legislators and their body protect trans and queer rights? It is not enough to just raise a trans flag for Again, I'm coming, as a community member, to uplift the demands of, for the last six weeks. One, we demand, we demand. Thank you. On all military equipment purchases. Two, we demand city council approves all SPCR recommendations on military equipment use. Three, we demand a data transparency ordinance for Sacramento City.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
Thanks.
Our next speaker is Lucian Mordecai, then MVW, then O.
I'll forget that. I'll get it.
Hello, City Council. My name is actually Lucian Mordecai. Thank you. My pronouns are they/them, as it is important for cisgender people to spread awareness about transgender rights and struggles, especially now with the amount of anti-trans bills sweeping the nation and the states. There's a difference between speaking up to amplify our voices and speaking for us. We do not need your voices to be louder than ours. I wish we did not need to scream for you to hear us as a whisper. It's very performative of cisgender, heteronormative people to put on what you call presentation about an experience they will never understand, for the more about us being a part of any decision-making process that has to do with our lives, especially when these same people, one of them left, are backing militarizing the police force when we will heavily affected black and brown individual livelihood. At least 32 trans people were killed in 2022. Well over half of those were black individuals. And I find it extremely hard to believe you lack the knowledge of these intersectionalities at hand, but I guess that is when the phrase ignorance is bliss comes into play. Unfortunately, only bringing awareness is not enough for a resolution. So I want to urge you guys to actually think about what else you're going to do besides one week out of the year.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is MVW, then O, then Marbella Sala.
As soon as you start, we can put it up. Please proceed.
Not all representation is good representation. If a cop is wearing a dashiki or a trans pin on their chest while they kneel on your neck, does it hurt any less? Solidarity with the trans community includes calling out performative and white liberal bullshit, like what you guys did today.
Speak on it.
Fascists come in all forms. They don't just have to be sick hiring or wearing a PB Six weeks, we have been sitting right here. Only people that have come, six weeks, every single Tuesday in a row. Not one of you, besides Katie, has come up to us and asked why we're here. What is it that we're actually asking about? We're here because of Tyree Nichols. We're here because he was a Sacramento native who really wanted to come back home, but he was worried about becoming homeless when he came back here, because he couldn't afford the rent. We're here because decarcerate Memphis, put out a list of demands. And we decided that those demands were so good that every city should have the demands that they have. Those demands include a demand on all, a moratorium on all military equipment purchases. We demand the city council approve all SPRC recommendations on military equipment use. We demand a data transparency ordinance for Sacramento City. We demand an end to SACPD's use of pretextual traffic stops. We demand an end to SACPD's use of unmarked cars and plainclothes police officers. We demand SACPD dissolve its gang enforcement and problem-oriented policing teams. We demand a moratorium on all homeless sweeps, stop the sweeps. And we demand an end to SACPD's traffic enforcement. We're here for Darrell Richards, for Brandon Smith, for Stephon Clark, for Joseph Mann, for Daisy On Flannow.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Next speaker is O.
For Juan Carlos Enrique Rodriguez.
Your comments.
Enrique Rodriguez.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is O, then Marbella Sala.
Visibility, the state of being able to see or be seen. Invisibility, the state of being ignored or not taken into consideration. We've been here for six weeks now with our demands, and I just want to give a shout out to our queer trans youth who have been showing up here for six weeks now, after this council has done everything they can to try to silence you, ignore you, and make you feel invisible. Yet they say they want to recognize Trans Visibility Week. I'm so sorry, this city is failing you. I see you, I hear you, I love you, and I'm proud of you. If only they knew how much the decisions they make in this room every week directly affect the communities we represent. The black community, the brown community, the trans community, the queer community, the unhoused community. We are directly impacted by the decisions they are making for us without us. People are dying. Our communities are under attack. And whether the council wants to admit it or not, their words and resolutions do nothing for us. To the families who lost loved ones due to being murdered by the police, and to the black, brown, queer, and unhoused communities, I want y'all to know that we will continue to fight until we live in a city where our communities can feel safe. A community safe from racist, militarized, overfunded police departments, a community where hate groups like Proud Boys aren't tolerated, a community with food security, and housing security, and financial security, because that's what we deserve, and that's what public safety actually looks like. So meet our list of demands, defund SACPD, fund the community, and F this performative-ass council.
Good evening. So I'm Marbella, and I'm here as a community member, not a measure U or a president of GNNA. And I was, I came here in support, and I applaud you for the passage of your two resolutions. And while it's a beginning, the words were very powerful and very moving. And I wasn't going to, and I was happy I wasn't going to say anything. And then this young woman spoke about the homeless woman that died because, she died of not having any place to sleep. And I've been, I've been struggling with this issue, not sure who to say something to or what to do with it. But when I leave here at night, I see the individuals sleeping along the outside of this building. No, nothing on the pot, they're on cement, trying with no covers, maybe minimal covers. And it bothers me. And last night, I left at 9:30, and it was cold. I was cold. And they were all lined up sleeping. And I just want to bring it to your attention. Can we at least show some compassion and give them those warming, the little silver blankets? I don't think they're that expensive, something. So that, I'm not saying remove them, by no means. I'm not advocating for that. But we know they're sleeping there. They're in city council. I have to walk out, all of us walk out. Maybe you don't see them, but I see them. And it's bothered me. And last night, it really struck me. And then when I heard this young woman say her comments, I decided I needed to bring it to all of your attention and see if something can be done for those. For right now, they're not going to the warming centers, but they're out there. And it just, it breaks my heart to see that and walk by that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Jack Blatner. Jack Blatner, if you'll unmute.
Good evening, councilmembers. This is Jack Blatner with the Sacramento Metro Chamber, representing over 600 member businesses in the region. I'd like to speak tonight about Measure O. You know, we were so pleased that the city and county reached a landmark partnership agreement back on December 6th. And we were right there at the celebration press conference in City Hall, and we're excited for further progress. But as we understand the text of Measure O, that December 6th agreement was the effective date of implementation, according to Measure O's terms. This is significant because Measure O requires that within 90 days of that effective date, which would have been March 6th, the city manager needs to identify and authorize at least the number of new emergency shelter spaces that equals 20% of the minimum threshold. Measure O further requires that 90 days after its effective date, again, March 6th, the city manager must collect data regarding the progress in providing those emergency shelter spaces and report that data to the city council every 30 days. You know, if the city has a different interpretation for what the effective date of Measure O was, we'd be happy to hear it. But as we understand it, it's past time for the people to hear from the city. And especially now in this inclement weather, you know, as we've heard tonight from those horrifying stories about people literally dying on the streets. So we do need those shelter spaces now, and we are looking forward to hearing how, where, and when the city will identify and authorize these new shelter spaces, as Measure O clearly requires. So please know that the chamber stands ready to help in any appropriate way as a willing partner. And we thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to hearing from you soon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Colin User 2. Is that Mr. Davis?
Yes, this is Lambert Davis, and I, I want to make sure that I get these two minutes in. I'm hearing something called the Del Paso Boulevard Marysville Corridor. See, as a native, you can't trick me with that. It should start being called the Marysville Boulevard Corridor. Why? Because if you go from I-80 on Marysville Boulevard and come all the way back to Del Paso Boulevard, you can get a lot of things accomplished, starting with paving the roads like you did Del Paso Boulevard last summer. It was a great job, but they didn't come down Marysville. And they went past Marysville to Rayleigh Boulevard, which is a great job, but you can't fool a native. So quit calling it Del Paso Boulevard first, because that's a trick. That's a trick. And in terms of city councilman Laloie, and even the city manager's office, I personally think that this is my vision. I'm the one who's been promoting this thing for, at least since last summer. And I think District Two should cut me a check of some money. And I think city manager's office should cut me a check. Because I'm the one who said to myself, if they listen to me, they can clean up the Marysville Corridor. And our cheesecakes have gone viral. We didn't hardly have. And our cheesecakes have gone viral, we didn't hardly have any money, and we still took it viral to the Bay Area during the Super Bowl and Valentine's Day, and shout out to the millennials of all races and cultures in Sacramento, you took a baby boomer through to an e-commerce deal. So thank you. But they should be cutting me a check, because I'm the one who kept coming down to City Hall promoting this. I'm not trying to steal the thunder, but I should get some sort of compensation. I can't get a check out of...
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Courtney. Courtney, if you'll unmute.
Hi, yes, my pronouns are they/them, and first off, it is incredibly disrespectful and shady to continue to move agenda items when they are related to the police unless requested by us citizens. I have lost count of the amount of times an item that myself and others have worked hard to prepare to talk to, only to have it moved. Secondly, so many council members said wonderful supportive things regarding Transgender Visibility Week, but I'm curious to see if you all will put the money where your mouth is. To support the transgender community is to be against the police, and especially against the militarization of police. Because who was it that Marsha P. Johnson and Sylvia Rivera fought against at Stonewall? The cops. Well-armed, well-protected cops doing the bidding of cis white privileged people in their own city. During every city council meeting I have listened to since 2020, the community has expressed that we are opposed to and done with giving the Sacramento Police Department more money. Their budget currently sits at over $220 million. Our city is suffering greatly, but you keep wanting to give money to police, who even by their own metrics have not made this city safer. The budget has continued to increase, yet crime rates either stay the same or rise. When will you invest and care for our community instead of preparing for violence against it? How much do you spend on mental health services? How much do you spend on affordable and transitional housing? I say how much you spend, because clearly only one, or maybe two of you, are actually listening to the opinions of citizens of Sacramento. If more of y'all listened, you would know that we do not support the further militarization, militarization of police, and certainly do not support giving them any more money, ever, and done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our final speaker is Maria Gralva.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'd like to enter into public record this comment. I hope that, I hope that Angela Gralva is still in the chambers. My name is Maria Gralva, Latino Information and Resource Center. I'm here to comment regarding the assault that Sean Lolli did against my daughter. I think it's pretty hypocritical for him to speak about women's rights when he is known for... Is somebody...
Don't shake your head.
Okay, is, am I, excuse me?
Maria, you can continue.
Okay, I'm assuming I've, I've not lost time. It's very important that I enter into public record, and actually, this is really a notice of a cease and desist for the council member. Some of you might have seen the, the Sacramento Bee opinion by Robin Ipley, I believe. It appears that there's a pattern here, and it appears that the council member is putting the city in a very liable position by yelling at women. It's a fact of the matter that he attempted to sue me for slander, and Marc Maron sued him back. It was a slap case, and he lost, he had to pay $35,000. And he goes around saying that it's a business write-off and that it was a lie, and that it's not true. The fact of the matter is that he has over 15 cases where he was sued for breach of contract, for labor violations. The Federal Department of Labor had, went after him, and so he's trying to look like he has some kind of a facade that's not proper. And so please, I ask the city attorney to sanction this misogynistic person, because I don't want to have to file a complaint. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, Councilmember Jennings, you have adjourned in memory.
I do, Vice Mayor. In this council meeting, I'd like to adjourn the council meeting in memory of Dr. Curtis J. Mitchell. On Sunday, March 12th, Dr. Mitchell went home to the loving arms of his Lord. As he departed, he was surrounded by the spirit of love of his family, his friends, and members of his congregation. In the eyes of many, he was a giant, he was a giant of a man. Dr. Mitchell was a senior pastor of the Antioch Progressive Church for the last 30 years, 30-plus years. He was a son, a brother, a husband, a father, a grandfather, great-grandfather, and mentor to many, including me. He was smart, holding academic degrees from Trinity Theological Cemetery, a Master's of Ministry, summa cum laude, and a Doctor of Philosophy. Many of us sat on his porch and listened to every single word that he said. He was involved in many facets of community work, such as the Sacramento County Department of Health, the Task Force on Aid, the Board of Directors of the Goodwill Industries, and many, many more. A remembrance service in celebration of Dr. Mitchell's life will be held Friday, the 24th, at 6:00 PM. Also, a celebration of life will be held on Saturday, the 25th, at 10:00 AM. On Sunday, March 26th, a special Sunday service worship will be held at 10:00 AM, along with a luncheon featuring the seven sayings of Dr. Curtis J. Mitchell at 12:30. All services will be held at his church, Antioch Progressive Church in Sacramento, California, in District Eight, at 7650 Amherst Street, Sacramento 95832. In addition to closing and honoring him at this meeting, a city resolution will provide, will be provided to the family. I just want to let all of you know that Dr. Mitchell was an incredible mentor to me, someone who I truly respected and looked at as a father figure. And every single thing he told me, I listened to every word and held it close to my heart. He will be missed.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. I too would like to acknowledge and my condolences to all his loved ones and his community for his tireless work. With that, we are, we will adjourn in memory of Dr. Curtis J. Mitchell at 7:03 PM, March 21st, 2023. We stand adjourned.